Please call the monthly board meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make the motion.
Second.
When makes the motions, we're all second on favor show hands. Motion carries. The citizen's statements.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did not have anyone request participation as per board policy BDDH.
Written communications?
Uh, no written communications either.
Military update.
Good evening. I'm Megan O'Donoghue, Director of Family and MWR from Fort Leonard Wood. And as you know, we are coming up into April, which is month of the military child. So our military children, as you know, serve right alongside with their service members. And they often have to have extended times away from parents. They have to leave coaches and schools and teachers. And they have so many challenges, but they just bounce right back. Our military children are some of the strongest, most resilient children I have ever met. So the month of April, per Department of Defense, is designated as Month of the Military Child. Fort Leonard Wood is going to have a variety of activities and events for our military children and families to participate in. To kick it off, on the first of April, we're going to have an art gallery in Dillard Hall at six, starting at sixteen hundred. And we're going to end with our Mom C, Month of the Military Child, drive-through, which is both entertaining and educational without even having to leave your car or your car seat. So we invite everybody to come out and join us and to participate in Month of the Military Child. The official color for military children is not orange sadly, I'm sorry. It is purple to support all of our services. And so we ask that you take time to purple up in April in support of our military children. Pending any of your questions, that's all I have right now.
Any comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
District announcements, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Megan, every year I have a hard time getting these folks to wear purple, and I know why. It's got nothing to do with military children. But uh, they usually one or two will, will acquiesce and, and do that. But uh, first of all, I want to recognize East Elementary. Can we hear you back there? We have a large contingency. All right. Thank you for all you're doing. Uh, East has been recognized by a couple of different organizations this year for their growth and student performance over the last several years, and we sure appreciate all that you're doing, East. Uh, April is Month of the Military Child, and we invite everyone to purple up by wearing purple on Wednesday, April the twentieth. Uh, we're coinciding with MIC three, the Military and Estate Children's Compact Commission. We'll use April twentieth as our purple up day. Uh, we're looking forward to that. In addition, we have a community salute to service that will be held at six P M. Wednesday, May the eleventh, at Tiger Stadium at Waynesville High School. We will recognize students from South Central Missouri who will be joining the military. Uh, so the public is encouraged to attend. Uh, Waynesville High School's Theater and Music Departments and Thespian Troop, uh, six, six, one, six, six, nine, will present the musical The Addams Family in April and May. Details including how to purchase tickets are on the high school's main webpage. Uh, our Spring Tiger Festival of Nations and will be held outside at five P M. on April twenty-second, Waynesville High School. We have Vista Summer Associate Positions open. Uh, for more information, you can call AmeriCorps, visit their website, or you can call them at eight four two twenty, twenty-two fifty. Uh, Meet the Candidates will be held at six P M. Wednesday, March the thirtieth, in the Waynesville High School Library and will be broadcast live on Channel twelve Tiger TV, on Cable America and Facebook. The candidates are Erin Pondrum, David Griffin, uh, Charles Quinn, and Melissa James. The election will be held April the fifth. Uh, there'll be no school on Friday, April the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And graduation will be held on Friday, May twentieth, in the last day of school for students. Grades K eleven will be Friday, May twenty-seventh. I'll also throw in on, on April sixth, in Jefferson City, uh, we're going to have the kickoff for the Month of the Military Child. And very fortunate this year, General Nell will be there, as will the Commissioner of Education, uh, several representatives, and of course, the board's always invited. It's at ten thirty in the morning in the Jefferson Building in the Board of Education room. So we'll be, uh, bringing actually a class from Wood Elementary. Uh, so we'll have forty-five of our, uh, students, that, that includes, she didn't have forty-five in one class, by the way. That's, that's, uh, we'll have, uh, we'll have, uh, one class of elementary, then we'll also have representatives from, from middle and high school. So very excited to do that and, and have the kickoff, and the, and the governor's issued a proclamation for that as well. So that's all I have.
A motion to approve consent agenda items B through L.
Motion.
Haron makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We're all second on favor show hands. Motion carries. Student recognition, Special Olympics Basketball Team, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, it is my honor to recognize our Waynesville High School Special Olympics, Olympics Basketball Team. I would like to call our team members and their coaches up. And then I will recognize each of them. You want to stand right there?
I'll hide.
We'll call everyone up. Okay. Okay. Waynesville Special Olympics Basketball Team qualified to play in the state tournament on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. The team competed in the regional tournament in St. Charles over the February nineteenth weekend, and then they won gold, making them eligible for state. The team is coached by Justine Swan and Karen Wilkerson. So tonight, we have some members with us, but I'm going to go ahead and call everyone's names, but when I call your name, go ahead and come up. Jonathan Alexander. Congratulations. And we also have Logan, we also have Logan Rim with us. We had a few team members not with us tonight, Ashlyn Cardoza, Jeremy Corpuz, and Jeremiah Corpuz. But we want to take this opportunity to recognize our outstanding athletes.
And then spotlight on education, Ms. Hayes.
Mrs. Dye is going to recognize our certified and classified honorees first.
East Elementary would like to recognize our School Resource Officer, Josh Alexander, as our classified staff member spotlight honoree. Officer Alexander stands out above the rest. He is a kind, caring, dedicated professional. He works tirelessly to ensure our East staff and students are safe. He listens to problems at hand and works to find solutions that may be outside of the box. He attends our weekly student support team meetings without fail and mentors many students. His daily positive presence at parent drop-off and pickup is just what our community needs. Officer Alexander has been an amazing addition to the East team. Um, East would also like to recognize Pamela Mendez as our certified staff member spotlight honoree. Mrs. Mendez is a Title One reading teacher at East, and before that, she was a first grade teacher. She has a passion for teaching students to read and seeing them grow into fluent readers. She goes above and beyond to assure students academic and all of their other needs are met. Her students are always highly engaged when visiting her classroom, incorporating movement and other engagement strategies. Ms. Mendez is also a teacher leader. She's always willing to share the science of reading with other teachers through professional development or during our professional learning collaborative times, and we are so thankful to have Pam on our team at East.
Okay, now we would like to honor our, uh, East third grade collaborative team, so if they could be making their way forward. East third grade is a highly collaborative team. This team consists of Angelica Parish, Candy Wagner, Elizabeth Niesel, Leanne Moore, Haley Jones, and Jessica Fuller. They work hard to make sure their decisions are student-centered, which has contributed to the team meeting their post-test average of at least eighty percent on all PLC-focused standards through third quarter. Their most recent math summative assessment on representing fractions on a number line was met at eighty-seven percent proficient or above, with seventy-six percent of our special education students proficient. The team has also worked diligently on getting their students to proficiency on the context clues standard. On their post, pre-test in September, twenty-five percent of our students were proficient. Today, eighty-three percent of our students are proficient on that same standard on the summative assessment, with one hundred percent of our special education students meeting proficiency on that standard. Their focus on student progress is obvious as they engage students in ways that reach all learners, and we are proud to recognize these individuals and their hard work and dedication tonight.
Third quarter of Project Teach, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike Freeman from Ed Morris Ford St. Robert Automobile Dealerships, sponsor of the Project Teach Award, will present this quarters hundred dollar award to Chelsea Lane, fifth grade teacher at Wood Elementary, for her project, How Do Earth's Spheres Interact?
Thank you, Mrs. Bales. Would, uh, Chelsea Lane, are you here this evening? She's here. All right, that's a plus. Well, welcome, and you're going to be recognized tonight. Want to say a special thank to you. You are one of our fifth grade teachers of Teaching a Science Project, is that right? I'm going to share with you some about her project. Their project was to develop a model using an example to describe ways the geosphere, biosphere, hydrosphere, and atmosphere interact. What a great opportunity for a hands-on project. This will be a complete introduction as students have no background knowledge of the fact that Earth has spheres at all, let alone that these spheres interact together. A system is called, is a collective interdependent parts enclosed within a defined boundary. Within the boundary of the Earth is a collection of four independent parts, interdependent parts called spheres. The lithosphere, hydrosphere, biosphere, and atmosphere. The spheres are so closely connected that a change in one sphere can often result in a change in one or more of the other spheres. Such changes are called events. Students will pick an event, and this event may occur naturally such as an earthquake or a hurricane. Or they can pick an event caused by humans, such as oil spills or air pollution. Students will create a model that, that shows how an event that causes changes to occur in one or more of the spheres and/or an event that can, can, can be the effect of change in one or more of the Earth's four spheres. Their project should include a two-way cause and effect relation between an event and a sphere. This is known as the interaction. Some examples she had. Humans, the biosphere, build a dam out of rock materials, lithosphere. Water in the lake, hydrosphere, seeps in a cliff walls behind the dam becoming groundwater, lithospheres. Or evaporation, evaporation into the air, atmosphere. I'm not boring you, am I? Once the project is complete, students will be able to identify each of the spheres in their model, how they, how they modeled their event and how this event directly affects each of the spheres. Having the ability to do this project in the classroom allows the students to use their creativity and take ownership of their learning. Now, I joke about that because it takes a lot of intelligence to teach these things and for students today to, to understand and be able to apply that to life. And that's what makes great scientists and creates students for the future and things that help us in, in life. So tonight, you're being recognized as our third quarter teacher of the quarter. I remember when I was a fifth grade, the only, uh, spheres I remember were dodgeballs, baseballs, and basketballs. They are spheres, that's exactly right. So this evening, we're recognizing an outstanding teacher, making a difference in our students' lives. Would you help me recognize Ms. Chelsea Lane as your third quarter project teacher? You're good.
Mike, Megan, I wonder if you've done enough of these, if you thought maybe a future career in teaching?
Uh, you don't want me teaching your children?
They're about to graduate.
I was just talking about that with the young lady. Everybody has their gifts. That is not mine. You are not boring. You did a wonderful job.
Congratulations and thank you again, Mike. Transportation Employee of the Month, Dr. Cobb, Mr. Wilking.
Thank you, Mr. President. Carl Wilking will present the Employee of the Month for March.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb, Mr. President. Uh, tonight, we'd like to honor Mark Leguski as the March Transportation Employee of the Month. Mark has been a member of the Transportation Department for the last thirteen years, and his job titles have been, uh, he's been a school bus driver, sped school bus driver, and currently, uh, the middle school crossing guard. Mark thoroughly enjoys his job and has built relationships with his students and parents. If you've ever subbed on his, on his route, which I have, everybody wants to know, where's Mr. Mark? You know, he's done a, a great job, you know, mentoring his students. You know, the students truly enjoy their, their bus ride with them to and from school. You know, Mark goes above and beyond his job expectations. You know, Mark has volunteered to help check roads in the mornings during the winter time. You know, definitely where he has to go, it's a very fun, it could be fun at times, a little bit. And definitely, he makes coffee in the morning and does other things to boost morale. Since taking over as crossing guard, Mark has continued to keep students safe and build relationships with students and parents. No matter the weather, Mark is always waving and smiling, which shows again how much he cares about what he does. Sad to say that Mark's retiring on Friday due to some health complications, but we do want to say again, Mark, thank you for everything you've done for our students and good luck to your future endeavors.
Congratulations, thank you. Community recognition, Ms. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is Rick Parrott manager of Papo's Pizza here this evening? Nope. Oh darn, I'm going to have to stop by Papo's and deliver the community recognition plaque for me. Uh, but I would like to recognize Papo's tonight. They played an integral role at Freedom Elementary, celebrating their leaders of the month. They provided pizza and the students, uh, that were, uh, recognized, let's see, seeking first to understand habit five, got to eat lunch with the principals, and they provided the pizza, so thank you very much, Papo's, and I look forward to seeing you soon.
District construction report, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, we're going to start off with, uh, Parker Fine Arts Building, and then we'll get into transportation and the storage building. So this is currently what the outside's looking like. They're finishing up, um, painting on the outside, the concrete's finished up. The roof there, hopefully with pending rain coming up, they will have the roof finished up this week as well. Um, this first picture, this is if you're standing on the, as you walk in the entrance, you can see they got, um, decorative wallpaper going down one side, and that's tile, and it's kind of hard to tell in the picture. You've got tile going on the other side, that's the hallways, your entrance, as you're looking through. Those doors on the other side is where the middle schools to kind of give you a reference. Um, this would be what the, the boardroom area looks like. They've got the flooring all down, they've got the carpet installed on the stage. Um, the wall painting is all done. Um, I believe hopefully tomorrow is the, where you can kind of see the sheet rock where the paint stops, there's wall covering, um, that, that'll go right there as well, that should be coming in hopefully tomorrow. Um, this is just kind of another picture, so the lighting and the ceilings, it's done with the speakers that are in there. It's, it's, it's a very bright, um, area you can go in there, we can really kind of down the lights up and down quite a bit. I was, I figured out how to do that. It took me a little while to figure out how to change the lights and get it to turn off, um, earlier. But as moving, this is the first picture, there's the bathroom, it's kind of highlight walls, you walk in the bathroom, it's orange, it's tile, um, wrapped around on the floors like that for help with cleaning, as well as kind of a picture of what the, the tile floor likes going into the bathroom as well. Uh, the very first classroom, everything in the classroom pretty well set. They've got the floors down, that's plastic, you can't really see them, but the floors are down. Um, everything's installed, um, just waiting on, uh, furniture to come in, hopefully the first part of May. And this is kind of a snapshot of the second room that's in. As well as that, I just kind of wanted you to kind of see what the flooring looks like. That's what's out throughout kind of the hallway and that entrance there as you come into. And then this is the executive room we got downstairs that our maintenance staff has came through, and they, they completely redid this, uh, put the carpet down themselves, the ceilings, got it all painted. Um, this will be what we use, executive room, D L Ts, and kind of that room that the community come in and rent, um, for meetings in there as well. It, it turned out very good. They did a, they did a great job, um, getting that ready to go. Is there questions on Parker before we get into some of the other projects? Um, this would be the storage buildings. Um, this is, they got the concrete walls going in, and as of, they were actually working this weekend as well. They got the panels stripped and poured, and they've got actual panels going up, um, kind of on, I'll show you this other picture. They kind of started up on the other side as they're making the, the foundation walls. So as that wall, as you kind of see the background of the building, they've got the panels going across there as well, um, getting ready to get that poured. So that wall right there's got panels on it, they're very taken down, concrete walls, so they're making very good headway on that. Um, jumping to transportation, this is kind of what the building looks like as of right now. Um, that's kind of the original part of the building that's sitting there. And they've got where the parts room was right here, they've got taken off, they've got that compacted down, getting ready to, rebar showed up on, I believe it was on Thursday, showed up there, so pending weather, they'll start to get ready to do concrete in that area as well. As well as this area, they've got it all compacted and ready to go, and it's, it's set up for concrete to be poured as well. And then this was actually, it's hard to see, this is the inside of where the office area used to be, so they've got everything stripped down. They've actually, or you see the generally, they got wall, the doors cut in on that concrete wall there going in to transportation, they got that ready. So this is already up and ready to go, and they've actually got the plumbing that was cut out and, and taken out there as well as of last week. And that is kind of where that, is there any questions on any of that?
What was the estimated completion date for the storage building?
Um, we're hoping that it's going to be right around the November timeline, but the buildings, the metal itself, the buildings are still set to come in, um, April twentieth is when it's supposed to be on site, so we're, we're, we're ahead of pace.
That's excellent.
Anything, any other questions? All right, thank you.
English Language Learners Program update, Dr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have the pleasure of doing our program review of our English Learners Program. Let me adjust this mic, I think I'm the shortest one up here so far. Um, our demographics for our ESL program, uh, we actually have one of the largest ESL programs in the state of Missouri, and we service around three hundred and fifty-two students in our program right now, and that includes receiving and monitored. And we are very fortunate, we have thirty-eight languages spoken, um, throughout our district. Um, and Spanish, English obviously is our most prominent, and then Spanish is, um, right behind it, is the most prominent language behind all of our other languages. As a district, we have, uh, three goals that we focus on for our ESL program. Um, using our assessment data to drive instruction, um, targeted professional development, and communicating with our parents and with other schools. I want to quickly highlight, um, each building to talk about, um, their EL population and things that we're currently doing with our EL students at there. Um, we have our EL specialist Jennifer Brown and Jolene Dean who assists, and currently, they service eleven students. And there's, I won't read it, but there's a grade level breakdown, so you guys can see, uh, which grades our students are in. Some of the instructional methods, um, that they've worked on at theirs, critical thinking skills, choice boards, um, and technology integration. And it's a little cut off on the side, but, um, students worked on boards, um, that represented their cultures and traditions, and they had those displayed at Tiger Festival of Nations for anyone who was able to attend, and they were very excited about that. At Partridge, uh, we're serviced by Jennifer Brown and Jolene Dean, and they have twenty-four EL population. Some of the things they've worked on at Partridge is real-world application and flexible grouping. Um, the kids really love Fascinating Fridays where they can do research and do experiments, and, and they do presentations, and it really helps on that social dialogue, um, um, learning the English language and interacting with peers. And there's some action photos of our students. Williams Early Childhood Center, um, we have our E, ESL specialist there, uh, Jamie Carter and Ally Harrington, and there's currently twenty-five students, and they're serviced on Fridays based on student needs. And then at Wood, um, Jamie Carter also services there with Ally Harrington, and we currently have fifty-five students who receive services at Wood. And in that building alone, we have seventeen different languages present in that school. Um, we have stu, two students who are brand new to the country this year from Puerto Rico and South Korea, and then there's a breakdown of, um, the student grade levels. Uh, one, um, project that they worked on this year was creating an emoji that represented themselves, and they really got to study, um, their, about their culture, where they're from, and they got to present their emojis to the class, and then they displayed it on the wall, and I know it's hard to see, but there's some of their emojis that they had to represent themselves. They also worked on cultural celebrations with our third through fifth, fifth grade students. Um, they learned about Hispanic culture and famous Hispanic figures over time. And the mural, if you can see it in the picture, they created, um, to honor these important figures for all the students to see. And then they continued our cultural celebrations, um, for Black History Month, and they had a mural placed, and students examined quotes from famous African-American figures and chose a quote that was most relevant to them. And there's some pictures with some reflections with our students. At East Elementary, we're serviced by Barb Smith and Mrs. Grimes, and then they, uh, they serve fifty-one EL students, and they monitor four, and they have four limited English proficient, proficiency students. There's a lot of peer learning at East, um, the integrating, um, our students, um, learning the English language with our other students, um, using them as language models, um, putting them in low-stress environments to practice their new language skills. Um, in this picture, it's a group of first, first- In this picture, it's a group of first graders, and four of the students have been in the country less than three months and interacting with their peers. They also did Twelve Days of Christmas around the world and highlighted different traditions. Students paired up, third and fifth grade students paired up with our first and second graders, and they did research groups on different celebrations that different countries have, and they did presentations, and there's some of the pictures of our students. At Freedom, we're serviced by Mrs. Sanford, Mrs. Taylor, and then we have our para, and our student population is fifty-four students, and we're currently monitoring eleven students. Diversity and culture is very important there as well. They do different activities, celebrating other nations, they do hallway work, describing other cultures, and create food from their homelands. Also, they did projects, culturally relevant topics such as civil rights era, life as a military child, life as an immigrant, and we're connecting with other students to see how they're alike. Freedom's focused on EDI teaching strategies, and we've seen great gains with our EL students with small group and pair learning activities, so there's some photos there. At our sixth-grade center, serviced by Jody Taylor and Carson Taylor, currently fourteen students service, and we do have one newcomer from Korea and twenty monitored. Collaboration is key at the sixth-grade center. Our ESL specialist collaborates during PLC and Teamwork Tuesday, sharing instructional strategies. We try to push in for all services except for RTI every Wednesday, and that way, that way, we're keeping students in the classroom with their peers. There's some photos there. Sixth-grade center is also focusing on real-world application. They're looking at career choices. We have them started working on resumes even for when we talk about what careers they may want as they get older, and so they got to start their resume, and then they'll continue to build upon that through the EL program as they progress through middle school and high school. Some celebrations with our sixth-grade center achievement: seventy-three percent of our ESL students scored at sixth-grade level or showed improvement on Star Math, fifty-seven percent of our students increased their Star Reading scores, and then all of our ESL students showed growth from first quarter to second quarter on the district writing score. So we're seeing some great gains with our push-in model at sixth-grade center. The middle school, serviced by Mrs. Bowman and Carson Taylor, twenty-seventh grade students and fifteen eighth-grade students, and we're monitoring fifteen. Some of the things that they're working on, collaboration during PLC, shared department plan time, and then instructional strategies that we're seeing to be effective with our ESL students as well as modeling. And then Mrs. Bowman also services our high school, and our EL population is there. Breakdown with the grades for you guys to see. With the collaboration, there are student classroom observations and check-ins, canvas implementation. Mrs. Bowman works one-on-one with teachers to collaborate to help the students, and some of those advertisements were ones that students had made during a project. That is all I had. Does anyone have any questions for me?
So about how much time do they spend directly throughout the week working?
Direct instruction is around a hundred-and-fifty minutes a week, depending on the building, but like our sixth grade and up is push-in services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Washington.
Thank you.
Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Professional Development Handbook, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Professional Development Handbook is presented as a first reading and will be brought back for approval at our April Board of Education meeting.
Library, Media, and Technology Services Handbook, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Library, Media, and Technology Services Handbook is presented as a first reading and will be brought back for approval at our April Board of Education meeting.
Job descriptions, Ms. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached job descriptions are presented for your review as a first reading: three-point-zero-point-eight teacher leader, three-point-zero-point-seven PLC steering team facilitator.
Move to action items. Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three staffing plan, second reading, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. The twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three staffing plan is presented as a second reading for your approval, please.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Pondham, motion, Mr. Dearing, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven on motion carries. Proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three certificated classified personnel handbook, second reading, Ms. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three certificated and classified personnel handbooks are presented for your approval, please.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Dearing makes motion, I have a second. Mr. Ralph, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven on motion carries. Student handbook and discipline policy updates, second reading, Ms. Long.
Good evening. I'd like to present the submitted list of discipline policies and student handbook updates for your request for approval this evening.
Any comments or questions? No comments or questions, do I have a motion? Mr. Pondham makes a motion, I have a second. Dr. Fulmer, second, all in favor, show of hands. All right, motion carries. Purple Star Support for Military Students Resolution, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this resolution, what we're asking the board to approve is not only a resolution just to proclaim April as the month of the military child in our school district, but also just in support of military students. The state of Missouri just started this year designated a designation entitled the Purple Star designation, and that's to designate schools who are exemplary in meeting the needs of military kids, and so obviously in our school district, since this is at the very core of what we do, I feel like this is an area that certainly we need to have that designation and also continue to support the needs of our students through our April, month of the military child. So this year, we're asking for a proclamation from the board, we'll have one also from the governor, but basically this states the fact that you are designating April as the month of the military child and continuing support for military students.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Harns, motion. Quinn, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven on motion carries. Region eight representative for MSBA Board of Directors, Dr. Henry.
You have amongst your midst here a person who has volunteered himself to serve in the MSBA organization at various levels throughout the years, and he's also been our region eight representative for years and certainly tied in closely with Missouri School Boards Association, so this is on because the board does need to give approval for Dr. Fulmer to serve as the region eight representative for the Missouri School Boards Association Board of Directors for a two-year term.
Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Pondham, motion, Ralph, second. All in favor, show of hands. Six yes, zero nay, one abstain. And then the Freedom FEMA Shelter bid approval, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration seeking approval for the Freedom FEMA Shelter with Navajo's construction in the amount of four million, one-hundred-and-thirty thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty dollars.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Dr. Fulmer makes a motion, I have a second. Quinn, second, all in favor, show of hands. Seven on motion carries. Closed session, closed record, closed vote is allowed by RSMO six-one-zero-point-zero-two-one, Section Three, hiring, firing, and disciplining or promotion of employees in Section Thirteen, individual personnel records, performance ratings. Do I have a motion in your closed session? Quinn makes a motion, I have a second. Harns, second. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, we're in close.